Hello.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I barely saw Eric, barely saw her long-term access because that's our building. Mr. Wild?
So what color?
My wife was never going to pass.
Oh, my.
How are you?
Good. I was there for a lot of crowds.
Right, right.
We watched the video.
Yep.
You read?
I'm going to go see a kid.
Yeah.
I did see.
All right. I need to turn on what we're doing to make your screen not break. And then return to the whole game on there, you know, sound good. I mean, how does that?
Oh, yeah, I've seen those.
Doing, using.
Oh, God.
That's wild.
And it's just literally like doing it.
That's wild. What are we looking at?
Yeah.
Staying warm over there, Mr. Wild?
Yeah, nothing bad. Warm here is the health of Minneapolis, I'll tell you that.
What do you have there?
It was, uh, yeah, we had the.
Oh.
To a different place, so. From Nashville, well, from even Curry to.
Someplace in the city.
So she was going to hire a movie company in that line. Um, we've got seven pickups.
There's a difference, yeah, there's a difference.
Yeah. They're not that old, they don't have that much stuff.
That's right, yeah, actually that's what happened when I moved the garage is full of my daughter's stuff.
Right.
She won't go until fall, so he's like, well. So we hold on to it.
Yeah, we've still got some of her stuff and some of the other one's stuff and. Yeah, it's like maybe we need to just buy a cots and just throw it all together.
Yeah.
Yours.
That's great. Hi, Angie. Yeah.
Snow's coming down for a year.
Is it, is it? I didn't know what we were supposed to give it.
They reflect a little snow.
Yeah.
Jason will not be here.
Yeah, he said he was driving, but he said he'd be here half an hour.
Yeah, I think things got pushed back a little later, so he won't make it, but he said he'll be listening. I didn't, he asked if I said I was texting him.
Yeah.
So once Jared rolls in, we should be. Good to go. Wow.
Pretty sure.
That's not a thing anymore. That's not a thing anymore. Mr. Holmes, how's it going? How's it going today? It was a slow burn, but I screwed it up.
Busy around me today.
Yes, we're running.
Yeah. Finally after two days on the. Over Texas and it's over capital. Yes.
So it's that money.
No, this is capital, this is your capital.
Okay.
It's actually.
I think they have interest.
Uh, my interest is an interest on.
The first two.
I believe so.
Silver vaults. How'd it go, Mr. Denny? Smooth, can you tap the files? Nope, that's good. John gave one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which we don't go through.
I didn't give the tables around again.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Those two would get the thing.
Yes, yeah.
We had those, was it JB?
What age was that?
JP Rest.
Request for JD World Championships tonight. Missed the medal, babe.
Intense?
It was intense.
They don't even keep teams scoring, do they?
I'm glad I got a shot, because I need everybody else.
Any Vikings fans in the room? You are? You are too?
Yeah.
Yeah, hustle the stuff.
Or, or hear me out, maybe we want to stay here longer. That way we don't have to watch it. Well, Oakdale Green buys really fifteen cents a people. Christmas.
I don't know, that might result in getting painful.
Sure. Especially this year, there's been some who walked away from the game, it's like, this is dumb. And then they end up winning again, it's like, I thirty-five, I take off. Thirty-five. Well, I guess enough sacred, it's TV, it started in the early days.
Seven o'clock on my watch.
Okay, sounds good. I've got something about called me and George. Starting flooding.
To the power of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, in whose book with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first agenda item is approval of the minutes of the meeting held December ninth.
No changes right now.
We've got a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the meeting December ninth, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next agenda item is persons wishing to address the school board, we're not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Nope, no changes, good to go.
Okay, no changes, we just need a motion in a second to approve.
Make a motion.
Got a motion in a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion passes. Uh, next item, are there any new conflict of interest disclosures? Seeing none, move on to the business manager.
So I threw that up here, both consent agenda, got a few changes that Kim's going to talk to you about, and a couple of them are about the consent agenda, so I won't hurt feel to address that at the same time, so we'll let Kim go here.
All right, so first, I'm not going to touch on the consent agenda right away. Um, first, we are working through a change with staff on how they submit absences for leaving and being gone from school. And the old version was doing it on paper, and then the paper would shuffle from the employee to, then their principal, then to their principal secretary, and then up to the business office, first to then enter to payroll. Now we're bringing an electronic system, so it goes much faster than process does, and then we also tie the substitute to it, and then it automatically pays the substitute based on what we're going for. Um, it is working really well, we've had just a few hiccups with setup, but we are working through that, um, pretty excited about it, so it's something we.
Twenty twenty-four?
Yeah. Welcome. Yeah, yeah, it's something we talked about right away when I started my position here, so I'm really glad that we got there, so it's going well. Uh, the next thing is the consent agenda, we have a few changes here. Um, you will notice that you have some extra reports inside of your packet this time, so after your claims, after the claim detail, you'll see your comparable that you normally receive, which shows the fund balances with the receipts and dispersments each year at this time of the year. This report to me does not provide any value, it's quick to put together, it's just, I don't think it gives you any value. Funding changes every year from year to year, so you're getting different funding, um, based on when the state gives you, your state aid, that can change month to month. Um, there's just too many variables in here that I don't think it provides valuable information to make a decision off of, I don't think it's something I need to continue to do. So that'd be one thing. Um, then the next report, so that one's three pages, you'll see, the next report is your statement of receipts, dispersments, and cash balances for the month.
That's page nineteen, right?
Yes, page nineteen. So this page shows you from month to month and year to date, what you have brought in for your receipts, and then what your dispersments, and then your cash balances down at the bottom, based on the accounts. Um, with this report, I manually enter this all into Excel every month, it takes me quite some time to put together, there is a similar report that's in our software already, where I'm inputting all of the data already, and can run the report from it. So if you go to page twenty-one, that's where that report begins, and this is called our balance sheet combined. And so if I run this on an annual basis, it's giving you month to month in comparison to the year. The one thing that you do lose with this report is your detail of receipts in the different categories, like taxes versus tuition versus donations and such like that. There is other reports I can run for you, like a revenue report that would give you that detail back if you so choose. Um, but I think just knowing the balances is enough information for you to know for month to month what you have, so. Um, I'm proposing to change that. And then, uh, with that, you would run, I would run the custodial accounts separate, which is the next one, starts on page twenty-four, so that one would be the balance sheet for your custodial accounts. Would be also replacing, uh, the statement of receipts, dispersments, and cash balances. And then that shows you what we have in each of the different groups.
So essentially, what Kim and I talked about was providing you all with relevant information, that's, that is a little more efficient for her to give to you, there's no sense of doing things twice, just to do them twice, so if she can, if she's already got it there, then she can run those reports. We're just, unless you guys are completely opposed to that, this is how we're going to go moving forward. If there's always, if there's any additional information, all you have to do is ask them, she can give you whatever numbers you think you want, but for us, we just thought this was much more relevant. Um, when you're comparing, you know, our revenues for twenty twenty-four versus twenty fourteen, I mean, funding formula has changed, there's so many things that you can't even really compare, it's app is orange, so. Um, again, unless you guys are adamant about us not changing, that's what we're, that's what we're going to do moving forward, so if there's anything you'd like to add, just let us know, especially dollars and cents wise, that's what we just let.
Yep.
I just, um, wonder, so do you say we're going to lose some of that detail?
Yeah, you lose the detail of, you know, how month to month what you got for taxes, but what I'll tell you is your revenue, you'll be able to tell when you're getting your big lump sum tax money, because it only comes twice a year. The other months it's very small and small, so you're not gonna, you're not gonna notice it those months that you didn't get the drawing to come until you get it.
And this claim detail is at the front?
Yeah, that's, that's going to remain, the claim detail, that report remains, that is, that's what you're spending your money on, so those are your expenditures, that's your expenditures piece of your balance.
I mean, they're both for money taxes, but when it comes to reverse the tuition, some person.
Yeah.
Fractions.
Yeah.
I could really find this.
All right, great.
Um, your year to year stuff is really only relevant when it comes to budget setting, you know, I mean, because it is what it is. Your month, your year to year balance in June is what it is.
Yeah, what the state's giving you is changing every year.
Yeah, well, when you're doing your budget, that's when the budget people can look at what fund balances were exactly.
Absolutely, you want to look into it.
Right.
That'd be the time, yeah, for sure. And then, uh, any other questions on that consent agenda changes? Okay, the last thing is our bank accounts, right now, we currently have a savings account for every fund, so we have a general, us, capital outlay, special education, food service, on elementary bond, other than that, we have a savings account for every one of them. Um, I would recommend merging all that you can, you have to leave your bond and your, um, debt service one separate, just by law, to keep those tracked separately, but if you merge them all into one, you can get a higher interest rate with the other ones, and, um, I think we could bring in a lot more revenue interest wise per month. Um, I've already talked to the bank to see that, and they, they were able to offer me a higher interest rate merging them, um, so that would be what I would recommend.
Again, it's kind of an efficiency thing.
Yeah.
But savings account dollars are, are dollars to spend, but they're all in just separate accounts, and you're losing, you're, you're jumping over dollars to save times by not combining them, gaining interest rate and adding more dollars to them.
And we're still tracking.
She's tracking it separately regardless.
Yeah, in the software, they're already being tracked separate, you'll know what you have for special education versus general, um, it's just merging them as the bank. I would still manage them separately as separate funds.
And it's not a money market economy, it's a general savings account.
Um, they are money market.
This one?
Yeah, so they are, yeah. But there should be, um, this one would be three point eight, so.
Again, I, I don't think we need a motion for that, it's just as long as, unless you guys are adamant that we don't do that, that's, that's our plan.
It's being tracked, so.
Yeah, and I, that's what I was actually used to. They're like, yeah. Yeah.
I love talking to you so far.
Yeah. Sounds good, thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks for that. Nobody has any part of the questions on that, we will move into the consent agenda.
Only question I have is part of the claims. Uh, there was a fifty thousand dollar total for John's control, it's a necessary service contract?
Yeah, so you have a service agreement that you pay, it's every six months, I believe here, um, and yeah, it's a bulk of that, I think it was forty-six thousand, yes.
Sixteen, 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 sixteen.
Yeah, split between the three.
Yep. Okay, we're in the middle year of that, that's open twenty-six, or, or, we're in direct twenty first, spring twenty-six.
But if we do the HAC.
Yeah, we'd save about six thousand dollars on that, with, if we do the extract changes, and then, at the end of twenty, you know, twenty-six, we would renegotiate that, that price whatever it is.
There's one question I have. Okay. There's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay. Motion passes. Next item, old business, first item in the old business, strategic planning.
Okay, so just an update, I did send you all the numbers for the surveys, we got those back, um, beginning of last week. Um, middle school at a hundred and forty, middle school students, hundred and forty responses, high school students, three hundred and nineteen, alumni was forty-two, parent responses back with two eighty-seven, um, community was one oh six, and, and, uh, staff was a hundred, so. Um, I did just print, I did update this, this was something we started at the beginning and changed some dates to, to, uh, be more accurate from when we started the surveys, when we got them out, when we got them back. We do not have the, the results back yet, so I just kind of put them in January, hoping to get them back in this week or two, probably end up meeting with, uh, once we get them back, meeting with our strategic planning committee, and then moving forward from there, and hoping we can present that information to the board on the tenth, I hope Tom could be there that day. I would imagine each, they would, gotta be close to getting done by then, but anyway, so this is just an update of timelines, all that is, um, kind of suppressing, but.
So what do we think about that allotment number, we, I mean, is that enough to get anything out of it, or is it?
I think it might depend on whether this family, like, if, if it's all forty and plus of two thousand and twenty-three, it might be relatively, but if it's three year, five year, seven year, two year.
Right.
I guess it's hard to say, till we get it, till we get it back.
Okay.
Honestly, overall, those could be discovered, yeah, I don't know. I just, you know, we, we see our parents and everything show up for everything in Delap, it's, and it was like two hundred and eighty-three, two hundred and eighty.
Two eighty-seven.
Two eighty-seven, and the survey was one oh six. A little bit surprised, and a lot disappointed, not that a lot, so I just hear, this was everybody's opportunity to put their thoughts and feelings and everything out there and have a say and function at the school, but it's clever, and people didn't take that opportunity for whatever reason, and I guess that just says every day is tough.
As well as perhaps, you know, was Tom, like, did he feel like those were decent numbers?
Uh, pretty, pretty normal.
Pretty normal.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he was not disappointed, he was not disappointed with the numbers, but I mean, it's pretty.
Well, and to be fair, really, I mean, I guess I kind of look at it as a little bit of a vote of confidence in the board itself, that things are not going too far off the rails. When you find a lot of community parents engagement is when they feel like you're doing something wrong, you know, not to try and steer things the right direction, it's, it's a lot of that is happening in fact.
Well, hopefully, that, okay.
Well, right, and, and hopefully we don't go the wrong direction to where you do, um, see a lot of community parent engagement, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's just quite simply people feel like everything's on line, so I don't have to really do anything, you know, and it's not that they don't care, but it's just, yeah, I mean, you start looking at school board votes, you know, how many people turn out to vote? Yeah, it's about that number, you know, so. So, yeah, I mean, it's, yep, just, I mean, I wasn't surprised at all at the numbers, I thought they were, I actually pretty good.
Yeah, we'll see if the results say when we get them.
Okay. That's it for that.
Yep.
All right, next agenda item is the HVAC equipment discussion.
Right, so I'd like to make a decision on whether we're going to move forward with HVAC tonight or not. Um, what, what Kim and I, this is our, um, this will be familiar to you because you've been on a bunch for whatever, this is our five-year capital outlay plan, I put a colored copy on, there's one, I mean, hopefully I gave you a colored copy too, so I refer to that, but. Uh, a couple of things I want to, uh, call your attention to, if you take a look at the last page, in the blue there on the bottom, essentially what I put down is that's our accepted bid for the roof project of twelve point eight million. Proposed HVAC costs seventy-eight, three, nine, for a total of two point five million and some change. You go up there a little bit, you'll see that we wrote that down, we just split it in half for the twenty-five, FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, um, at about one point, let's round up to one point three million apiece. If you go down and you see in the orange, that's essentially what our reserve funds would look like after we made those purchases. So you can see, we're still at well over three million dollars in FY twenty-five, two point two million in twenty-six, and then you see it's rising twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, that twenty-nine is still at four million. Um, you, Kim and I agree that what's well within our finances to be able to do this, we just think it makes sense to do it now when on the roof and then moving forward. Um, so I mean, our, our recommendation was let's, let's just bite the bullet, let's do it, we don't think financially it would be, in any effect, we would be okay. I also want just, just to, just to go kind of draw your attention here, if you go to the front page, you look at expenditures, you see that first one is, um, essentially a final certificate payment of two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, so that's coming off the books here this fiscal year. If you go down, just below that is one oh eight, six fifty-seven, that's more certificates, and those will come off of, um, you'll see the last payment is June of twenty-six for one eleven. And then if you keep going down, you'll see we have certificates that are going through thirty-four, certificates that are going through thirty-nine, and certificates that are going through thirty-two, so. I, I'll agree that to your attention, because both Kim and I agree, if we have the dollars, we just need to do it, and let's not add any more certificates or borrow any additional dollars and add more certificates, as you see, we've already got, you know, they're stretching out to two thousand thirty-two, thirty-nine, thirty-six, so. Uh, by all means, have a, have a discussion with the board, but our recommendation would be, we think we can do it financially pretty easily, let's, let's move forward, that's why the reserves are there, and we'll.
Do we anticipate any more danger factors?
I mean, no, nothing in the millions, I wouldn't think, I mean, obviously we have a ten-year plan there for roofs as we move forward, that's going to be something, but. It's the things that we can anticipate are the ones that, you know, that we're gonna have to look at, but again, if you had to, you could get into certificates then, but two million in reserves, I think it's, would cover any crazy things, I think. Kim, you have input there.
I was just going to say the same thing, at that time is when we could look at certificates if something like that were to come up, I don't think the timing is right right now, we'd have to do that, but later, if we had something come up that we can't predict.
And, and I would add too, that our, our staff and our principals are pretty good at not spending the allotment of their entire budgets, you know, just an example of that would be, um, if you go to like page, uh, let's see, where did you, if you go to that final page right back below the yellow, you see those capital outlay flexibility transfer to the general fund? Um, we budgeted six hundred thousand, we have, we have never hit that number, as a matter of fact, we've been over four hundred and fifty-one time, I think, in the last five years, so there, there's kind of, you know, this is based off those budgeted numbers, so there's a lot of time, but we're not even hitting those numbers, so. Yeah, I think, I, I, I truly believe we're well within our financial range to be able to do this, but again. Kim did answer some questions, because we go, like, we're all kind of blaming her, and it's.
Initial down rated in the villa, all of that fund, the horn line, is that, that's just basically current tax information?
Yeah, and, and, and paying things off, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's not even, I think she did, there is a contingency of like the two percent valuation increase, I think built in there, but, um, that's low, that's very conservative. So, I was just gonna say, that's how conservative you were there, you see what those, how it looks like, you see how much we have in reserve, you look back at the last seven, eight years that you have here for capital fund, it's consistent, I mean, as well as this in twenty twenty, that's. Two point, sorry, near, two point nine, it was two point five. Whether it's done this stuff since then.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, looking at all this, we want to roll the cost last time as well, this goes very comfortable, I'm thinking of putting anything out there from a female perspective, and if you just put that.
Well, I think too, in relation to our, like, our last conversation, we decided to report, um, the roofing project itself, we're gonna do it all, we're gonna talk about the warranties and the life whatever thing, we're gonna be pretty close with it and some of that stuff, are you coming down and doing it? I don't see that, I mean, it's just really makes sense enough, I mean, so.
Okay. Why is that motion approved? One minute second. Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve, uh, moving forward with HVAC product. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next agenda item, one more year.
Okay, let's see, we gotta get to that page. Um, that, the advertisement is in there, as you can see, uh, we did find one error. The address is right, it says Del Rapids, so if you type that in, you would go to a completely different place. So we haven't changed it to Sherman, because it is actually Sherman South Dakota, that gets you where you're going. You eventually find it, right, Kim?
You do, you do eventually find it.
You can get that.
And the sign is there, so you can confirm.
Uh, so we're good to go, Tara's been great with, uh, with Landmark Realty. She suggested the online piece is, is much more successful than going there and having a one-day, um, auction. It starts on the twenty-fourth of January, but does anybody want to take a guess? Which I should have brought up.
Try this.
Uh, how many registered bidders there are so far?
Do they have?
They have to register for, for this.
Five hundred.
Oh gee, that's way higher. I was, there's thirty-eight registered bidders to bid, I was shocked by that, I didn't think we'd. I thought five would maybe be the number, but.
Online.
Yeah, and they're starting it at an opening price of two thousand, twenty thousand and fifty, kind of in the middle of what those two are, so. Yeah, so that's where we're at with that, so that'll be, that'll be closed in, uh, February first, and by our next board meeting, February, kind of finals of the year.
Let me just say February. Oh, you get these online auctions, I mean, I, I own online auctions lots, and they're hundreds of thousands. I mean, people, people register that are from South America, you know, I mean.
They just wanna watch.
Yeah, I mean, they're, it's pretty nuts, online auctions are just, I mean.
I'm interested to see how it plays out. I hope Dr. would get the best, I really.
Right, well.
Did he have any, um, funding?
No, and I've mostly been working with his, his paralegal, so I've sent it to her, she was very helpful, she was glad that we sent the stuff, so I think they're ready to move forward.
Right.
Get taken to.
Yeah, either way, at the end of this, he knows where he's at.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, nothing else on that?
Nope.
Okay, on the new business, um, do I have to take these all separately or do?
Uh, we can, no, we can approve them all at the same time, if you want to just review them. Uh, GCL is one that we made some adjustments to, that was the staff development one. And then skip down one, DJ is the, um, federal procurement. And then those other four, we're just getting rid of. So unless you guys had additional questions, we could do them all.
So we're checking myself, DJ was an update or?
Brandon.
Brandon, okay. Any other stuff we're already doing?
Yes, it's just putting it all.
Is that the last one?
Yep.
The motions are through.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve the second reading of all these policies. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on new business is board resolution on educational vouchers.
Yeah, so I did give you, I did put in a, no, not yet, I guess I put it in your, um, oh, it's in your board package, page thirty-three? So this is a, a resolution that ASBSD put together for school boards, it was something they wanted to move on. Essentially, a resolution, uh, just says that officially, a school board is going to take a stance on something. That's really generally what we're doing, and you're doing it publicly, and you're putting it in your board minutes. Um, I just wanted to, if you guys wanted to do something like this, I want to present it so that we have the opportunity, if we wanted to do it, I think a lot of boards are doing this tonight. Um, obviously, it's in opposition to school vouchers, there's now, uh, getting this little, little later. Um, some new news on vouchers is there are, there's actually three voucher bills out there now. They're all kind of called something different. Um, so there are, there are some lobbying efforts that are gonna need to, need to happen. Um, the biggest thing that came up the last couple of days is essentially the East River Homeschool Group come out, came out in opposition of this, of this, of these vouchers. So, um, it's not, we don't think it's gonna gain very much traction. Um, doesn't seem to be anyway, but, um, if this is something that our, that our public school board would like to take stance on, certainly do that tonight. If there's any changes or things you don't like in that, I could make changes and we could do it later too. Legislative session starts tomorrow, so hasn't even really started yet, we have some time, but just wanted to make sure that was here for you, if you wanted the opportunity to do it, so.
Is there benefit to us, to you, the resolution, like, does that help the opposition?
Yeah, I mean, we, we go on a list that ASBSD would have, that would, would list our school board as one of the school boards that have come out publicly saying they're opposed to the school vouchers.
And so, and risk?
No, 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 no risk, like, no litigation risk at all.
And I went to an ASBSD meeting here, and this was one of the top five things they wanted to focus on in this opposition of these vouchers. And it will be for a whole space in general. Um, so there was kind of a unanimous, that we all around the public sector, that was, and that they were all opposed to this. Um, and so I would recommend, for that reason, you join the, in this opposition.
I would just add that you've been really great at sending the information, uh, there was a lot of that message forward, who wants to review on that? I guess, in all the reading, obviously, you looked there and heard that. I, I would say a hundred percent support a resolution like this, you can make a stance in the Del Rapids School District, that this is obvious, and it makes sense, and I think, um, given nothing, you never expect some really tight numbers this next year, and if, my brother lives in Iowa, he was talking about some major events, and he's been there, he's getting quite young, it's, it, it makes sense for us to make this stance, I think, so I would be pretty much in favor of it.
I'm in favor of the opposition, I do have just a couple of clarifying questions.
Sure, go first.
That I'm completely understanding. So currently, as everything is now, if a student chooses alternate education, helps voting for, um, private school, our school does not receive any funding to that student, correct?
Um, depending on when they decide to do it.
Right, so like, say, before we have our funding, say.
Yeah, we do, we do not receive anything, not, not at the general.
So then, um, if, do, does the school receive any partial payment if one of those alternate instruction students takes a class or joins an activity?
Yep, we get the percentage that they're here.
Okay.
Not activity.
Not activity, so only if they class?
Yep, if they take a class, then we get whatever percentage of the time that they're here, we get that.
And currently, if a student chooses alternate instruction, then we do not receive any funding. But with the new bills, these students will receive the vouchers, and that would take funding out of our general pool, right?
Yeah, essentially, what happens is if they're gonna, if the state is going to fund the voucher program, then those dollars are being, um, taken away from, that those public dollars are being taken away from public schools and given to private schools.
They're redirected.
They're redirected.
That's, okay, that's how I understood it, but I had, I had some people asking me questions on it, and I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it correctly, because they're like, well, you don't receive dollars for those students now, and I'm like, but I'm making sure that it's like taking funds out of.
Well, I mean, it all comes from the state.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's all just a big pot of money, and the more money the state spends on education somewhere else, it's less money you got, and, and, and my whole thing about school vouchers, I've always said since they've ever come out with school vouchers, if private schools were forced to take all students, any students that wanted to go there, I would be more in favor of the voucher system. But then, like, your disabled, your special needs kids, no private schools are gonna take the special needs kids because of the, what they cost to gain in financial benefit, they would lose in cost, you know? So then, basically, public schools would just be a place for special needs kids to go, and the dollars would go away, I mean, it, it would, it would destroy public education, so.
That's where I was.
Right. I mean, there's, there's only like different rules, I mean, if, you know, even like homeschool, um, associations aren't held to the same standards that public schools are, you know? So I mean, to receive public funding for something without, um, any accreditation or, you know, being held accountable to standards, you know? And it's all, and, and four million dollars, when they're talking about a one point two-five percent increase, and, I mean, it's ridiculous, you know? But we have an extra four million dollars, you know, so.
Which was clearly stated, this is just a start.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Right, so.
And did you guys watch the draft about the?
First of all, yes. Which.
Want to expand it?
Separate from our resolution piece, the question I have is if Governor put it in her budget, you indicated last time that that was one of the, right, others through bills. It sounds like there's a little discussion on whether she could do that or not.
Okay.
And I think that's why the bills are coming, okay, now. Sounds like they, it's still not gonna be supported by the.
Not so that big, is he?
Yeah, this is something to, to build fight base.
You need our motion to?
Yep. Yeah, if you want to accept the resolution, then you have, they could take the motion to agree.
You want to?
I'm motioning to adopt the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to, uh, be in favor of the resolution. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next agenda item, seventh election date.
Yeah, so we traditionally have done elections in April, the date would be April eighth, twenty twenty-five, and it's two spots that are open, we are on track now, so three-year, it's your three-year position and your three-year position, so, uh, what, petitions can be taken out?
January could be first, they can start to be taken out, and they must be returned by five, um, on the twenty-eighth of February.
So we just need to officially, uh, set that date of April.
Imagine the city's back in there.
Uh, you know, we talked about that, we're not really exactly sure, so, sometimes they do and sometimes they don't, because we're kind of told this is when you, if you're gonna do it in April, it has to be this date, if you're gonna do it in June, it has to be this date.
Sure. Okay, I'll make the motion, I'll reset it April eighteen.
April eighth.
Great.
Yeah, not it.
April eighth. Throw a curveball.
I second.
Okay, our motion's been made in the second to set our election date for April eighth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next agenda item is the superintendent of affairs.
Okay, so I'm just gonna give you, um, a little heads up on some of the legislati, so legislation starts tomorrow. Bills are already dropping like crazy, but just a few for you to take a look at, I, I didn't print a bunch of copies out yet because there's stuff there, they're in the infant stages, and they're gonna be cut up and marked up or whatever, but if you want to write these down, you can go to legislature.com or gov and look at them and kind of read through them. But some educational ones, House Bill one zero zero nine, um, this is one of the first vouchers, this is called Educational Empowerment Accounts, pretty interesting, interesting read, if you want to take a look at that. House Bill ten seventeen, uh, an act to require the acceptance of cash payment for admission to school-affiliated events. Basically, meaning you can't just go to all cards or go cashless, they're trying to pass a bill that says you have to pay cash. It's like this at the moment, but, but it was interesting. House Bill ten nineteen, uh, this is, this is an interesting bill, if you want to take a look, this is actually Tony Van Heisen, and if you remember, Tony Van Heisen worked for the, uh, for the governor for a while, a very, very strong educational, um, proponent. Uh, he's taking a look at not taking money from education, but possibly tax, collecting taxes in a different way. Essentially, um, and there's a lot to it, so don't quote me on all this, but essentially eliminating capital outlay taxes and increasing sales taxes. So, uh, take a look at it, um, read it, this, this one's one of the longer ones, it's twelve pages long, so. That's House Bill ten nineteen. Uh, House Bill ten twenty is the governor's bill, this is Act to Establish Educational Savings Accounts. So that's House Bill ten twenty. Um, House Bill ten thirty-five is appropriate, appropriate, uh, school security enhancement grants, uh, up to ten million dollars. We're essentially in favor of this if it's not coming from state funds and it's coming from federal funds, um, than we'd be for it, but if it's ten million on state funds, you're not really gonna go very far with that anyway, we'd rather have that to our teachers, so. Um, House Bill ten forty is dual credit, essentially, they're going from a third to one-half, so they're, they're passing some dollars on to the students there. So that would be directly affecting our students that are taking dual credits, will increase the prices. And then maybe the most interesting one of the year so far, Senate Bill fifty-one, Act to Require the Display and Critical Inclusion of the Ten Commandments and Other Documents. So, take a look at those, those are kind of the educational ones that dropped, there's new ones that drop every single day, and we'll keep track of them, I'll give you updates from time to time on where we're at with them, but those are essentially the educational bills now. Um, we have in-service January twentieth, that we've worked with my admin team on. Uh, also, our admin team is, uh, like I told you in the email over Christmas, that we're all registered for AIM's Pathways, which essentially is a building blocks to Science of Reading. We're real, we're looking at a, an audit of all of our reading instruction right now. Mr. Baker's doing a great job as our curriculum director, uh, Linda's been meeting with her staff at the elementary level, so, um, pretty excited about where we're going, so we're making headway there, it's a process. Teaching reading is no easy thing, that's for sure, there's a lot to it.
I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
How often does the Del Rapids School District do that, and how often does that line up with the state? Or is that always a percent?
Yeah, we have like a five-year rotation, depending on, so, um, just depending on where we're at with that, and then, I don't know what they did here, but, you know, I believe when they changed social studies standards, a lot of people took that out of rotation and waited, so sometimes it just depends on if you want to get on the same page. Generally, it's a five-year rotation here and there. Yep, yep, and right now, we're, we are on language arts, most part of the time, we talked about what we're gonna do there, because it's a big piece, but we're looking at it, and, uh, like I said, we're auditing what we're doing right now, so. Stay tuned on that piece. Um, I think I covered all of that. Uh, just an update on cell phone, you, our new cell phone policy, what I can tell, I'm not into afraid like Mr. Denny is maybe every day, uh, it's going really well, kids are responding really well, we have a few things here or there, but, um, I've been pleasantly surprised. The number of the kids I've talked to, I think, are pleasantly surprised as well. Mr. Denny, you want to add to that a little?
Not really, I mean, I think it's.
Would you please though?
I mean, it's just, uh, the kids, like, back to the worst, and the kids have done a great job of it, haven't really had a lot of pushback, so.
And our staff, I mean, we, we wouldn't be able to do it without the support of our teachers, and our teachers are diligent, and they're, they're bank-kept, and they do what we ask them to do. It is significantly different when you walk in classrooms. First thing I notice is I see a lot more computers, so, um, so it's, it's, it's going well so far, so. We'll see, we'll keep giving you updates as we move over. Uh, that's all.
Okay, perfect, next agenda item is committee reports, board of directors. Okay, seeing done, our next regular reading is February tenth, at seven o'clock, our here's in place. Um, executive session.
I don't, nope.
We need none, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes, we are adjourned.
Yep, so, all right, good. Um, next week committees, I'm gonna take a little bit of a break on the policy side, because we're gonna start moving into budget and, um, negotiations here in the next couple of months, and then maybe we'll pick it back up in like April or May. Is that right, everybody, guys? Just, uh. Just, uh.
How far have we moved yet?
Uh, we got a pretty good chunk, we got a pretty good chunk. We got a pretty good chunk, but.
Good statement. Good for mine.
Yeah, we got, we got marks, so we'll keep rolling, but the next pe, the next couple of months is gonna be, all of calendar meetings, budget meetings.
Oh, yeah, time, yeah.
And the negotiation meetings, so.